A roll call.
Yes. Council members Aquino.
Here.
Chalamchela.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
And Kozlowski.
Here. Okay, are there any agenda updates? Oh, I'm sorry. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Okay, are there any agenda updates?
You have no agenda updates this evening.
Excellent. Okay, I'd like to ask that we pull item number one forward and then we'll do business from the floor immediately afterwards. So Spencer Hodson, if you'll meet me by those mics down there. This one on.
You might have to bump it on.
All right, there are a great many of you here know Spencer and it's my great honor to administer his oath to the bar of California. Spencer's a Stanford Law School grad and local boy from Folsom and has recently passed the California bar exam, which is no small feat. So congratulations in advance and here we go. Okay, I state your name.
I, Spencer Hodson.
Solemnly swear or affirm that I will support.
Solemnly swear or affirm that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of an attorney and counselor at law to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Of an attorney and counselor at law to the best of my ability. Is that what it was?
Knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
As an officer of the court.
As an officer of the court.
I will strive to conduct myself.
I will strive to conduct myself.
At all times.
At all times.
With dignity, courtesy, and integrity.
With dignity, courtesy, and integrity.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right. I'm going to take the. Excellent. So excellent. Okay, so I'm going to sign this and then Spencer's going to sign this and then he is good to go.
Mr. Mayor, genuinely, the new admit he should have stayed by everybody a beer.
If you can find me. Thank you so much.
And if you can find an open bar.
Congratulations. There's your time.
Thank you.
All right, way to go. No. Okay, we're going to return to business from the floor. This is the opportunity in the meeting when the public gets an opportunity to speak on items that are not on our agenda tonight. Do we have any written correspondence to read in?
You have written correspondence. You also have several callers on the line.
Okay.
If we want to go to the callers on the line first.
Let's do that.
Our first will be Muriel Braunstein. Thank you. Muriel, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. We'll start the clock for three minutes and you go right ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Muriel Braunstein. I live in the Thomas Station. I represent neighborhood elections now. In 2021, whether or not we hold neighborhood elections should not be an issue. Most cities the size of Folsom in California have already made the switch from at-large to by-district elections. There are two reasons why the Folsom leadership is fighting by-district elections. One, certain special interest groups in Folsom would have their power and influence diluted if all areas of town and all interest groups were equally represented on the council. And two, most of the current council members live in roughly the same area of Folsom and some would have to run against each other if Folsom were to switch to district elections. Since no city in California has successfully defended against district elections, it is shameful for this council to waste the city's money on further litigation. There are so many more important things for the city to spend money on, such as services for the growing homeless population. I hope the citizens of Folsom remember this waste of money during the next council election. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Braunstein.
Okay, our next caller on the line is Bhaskar Vampani. Are you there?
Yes, I'm there. Thank you.
Wonderful.
My name is Bhaskar Vampani, the current president of Indian Association of Sacramento. First of all, I want to wish everyone a happy new year. And next, I want to congratulate Mayor Kojewski, Vice Mayor, Ms. Aquino, newly elected Council member, Mr. Chalamchela, and Ms. Rodriguez, and also Ms. Horvath. This, I want to share a few updates regarding our organization, Indian Association of Sacramento. It's a nonprofit organization, an umbrella of Indian regional states. It's based in Greater Sacramento with the mission of facilitating communication, cooperation, and integration between the Asian Indian community and the local communities. We do like a lot of events, including India Day, where like we showcase the Indian cultural diversity to more than over 4,000 of the Greater Sacramento attendees. We work with the local communities and cities and participate in events like MLK, Veterans Day Parade, and help in like a lot of service activities. We raised over like a $200,000 in the last 15 years and helped over like more than 20 charities. Just I want to share information about our organization and I would like to like collaborate with the Folsom City, which are service activities, the community activities. Thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next request to speak came from Dolly Sood. Are you on the line? Dolly, are you on the line with us? Okay, since we haven't heard from her, Scott Rafferty, you had also requested to speak this evening. Are you on the line?
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other callers on the line who wish to speak? Okay, hearing none, I will proceed to the written comments that have been submitted. There are two that we will read into the record. The first is from Robert Dresser and he writes, greetings, I would appreciate your advising the city council that I support the main points of Hari Shetty's email today at 4:40 in favor of district elections. Under the CVRA, the results of the 2020 election are not dispositive. The entire history of at-large elections needs to be considered. There is no likelihood, given past election results, that the interests of minority communities will be vindicated in future elections. Thank you, Robert Dresser, resident of Folsom. The second was written comments from Dolly Sood, who wrote, council members, we all mean well for the city of Folsom. Data has shown by district to be more representative and effective with less money being spent in it. Then why will we not go towards that direction? Folsom is becoming more and more diverse and Folsom is growing larger and larger. The whole of south of Folsom is going to be a city on its own. So we do need true representation and that all citizens' voice will be heard now and in the future. Our passion towards this issue is strong and we would like you to reconsider not tabling this issue and being in complaint with the CVRA rules. Thank you, Kavita Sood, resident of Folsom. Mr. Mayor, you have no further comments submitted on this item.
Okay, excellent. Are there any other folks in the audience that would like to comment?
You do have one request to speak from an audience member, Janine Ferrer.
Okay, come on down.
Excuse me, Hari Shetty did write a statement and he sent it.
Thank you. It was read during the 5:30 special meeting.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hello.
For those of you who know me, you know very well how terrified I am of public speaking, where I'm more than happy to talk you to sleep one-on-one. But members of the council, city staff, the audience, and all of you in Facebook land, I come to you tonight because I've been informally compiling some traffic statistics on my own with the help of 10 people. One ER, and these are all Folsom residents, who drive at night after 9:00 PM. One ER nurse, one traveling nurse, one ICU nurse, three warehouse workers, one ER doctor, two stock, restalkers, supermarket, and untold numbers of people, including myself, who are doing homeless outreach at night. I never really understood the problem that Folsom has with people running red lights and stop signs until two years ago, I stood here, and I even remember what I was talking about. I think it had something to do with South of 50. And Councilmember Howell, since then, has always talked about, please be careful. In October, I started doing nightly outreach because one of our members did not want to stay in the ER in the hospital, our homeless people. So far, I personally have had to slam on my brakes five times since October after the red light was a hard red light and I left rubber and I slow roll through green lights. There are a lot of things that cost money. Stopping at a red light, stopping at a yellow light, stopping at a stop sign does not. Our city has experienced, our country has experienced, our world has experienced too much unnecessary death. And some of us here understand that quite well, especially within the last few months. We have had to talk a little bit about, to make this easy.
Finish your thought.
Okay.
Yeah.
No.
Take, I take your time is what I'm saying.
A hard red, if you count one Mississippi, two Mississippi. And that's fast because I'm nervous. We've had 121 hard reds, and these were 10 people counting. Forty-seven hard reds after one second and 256 blown stop signs. This city could lose tons of people and it has. The intersection of McAdoo and Riley. I don't know the statistics. You all have access to them and I'm sure the kind officers behind me are frustrated every single day. People are walking more on their streets at night in the dark. I ask everybody, if you are out walking, to please wear something reflective. Does it matter if you have white clothes on? If you have a dog, please wear it. Put it on your cat, put it on your child. 121 two-plus-second hard stops. That's a lot of death. I don't know, I'm someone who tries to solve problems. We have tons of hand sanitizer and that's great. I don't know budgets. I know that there are tons of people on Facebook that have great power to raise money and to raise things. I am asking not the city, but individuals out there to donate and buy reflectors. Give them to your neighbors, give them to everybody. Because there's a lot of things in this world that aren't up to the city and elected officials and the government to pay for.
Sure.
We have to take responsibility. And thankfully, I'm still here in my nervous self tonight to go back and thank you for your time and your extra two minutes.
You did great. Thank you very much. And maybe if you wouldn't mind, could you share the stuff that you've gathered with Chief Hillman? He's writing back. I'm sure he'd be happy to take a look at it. That way he'd have an opportunity to target some intersections that maybe need some more attention.
Pardon me, I'm really trying to write something down.
Thank you very much. All right, are there any other comments from, on any other topic? All right, fantastic. Let's move on.
Okay. Your next item this evening, Mr. Mayor, is scheduled presentation item number two. This is the Folsom Plan Area Quarterly Update.
Mr. City Attorney, could you grab that mic from by her shoulder and move it out of the way, just so nobody trips over it? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski, members of the city council, Pam Johns, Community Development Director. And we're here this evening, as we are quarterly, to give you an update on development activity within the Folsom Plan Area. So this is your report out from the fourth quarter of 2020. And we have been highlighting at your request, planning activity, site development, infrastructure activity, and building activity. At the conclusion of each of these presentations, we post the presentations to the webpage dedicated to the Folsom Plan Area, which includes, it's on the maps and documents page, along with all other references and documents that you hear about this evening. So anyone interested can access it there and I certainly know a lot of people who do check the very next day to see if they can get the information and download it. So sharing of information. This is the map that shows the most current entitlements that have been approved through the city, not just the overall land use map, but the subdivision maps that have been approved. There are a few that are not yet reflected on here. And then this is a good gauge for understanding new development activities. So this is the map we use when we show things that have been proposed or approved and we kind of put a circle around where they are within this larger exhibit. Over the last 90 days, we have had eight new planning entitlements submitted. These are projects that require discretionary approval from the city, either by the Planning Commission or the city council. And so some of these items will be coming before you. The intent is not to have any discussion, but just to show you what's in the pipeline that will be coming forward for the city's consideration in the coming months. Most of them are residential. So this first one is a multifamily bungalow project that has rental, single-family rental units, which is interesting and different than what we have had to date in the plan area. The second item is Van Dale Multifamily Design Review, so an apartment project. This is the second apartment project application that we have submitted in the plan area. One has been pending for some time by Spanos and that'll be going to the Planning Commission in early February. The third item is a large lot map to subdivide an area of the plan that's called Town Center South, which is substantially south of the, what we consider to be kind of the mixed-use and commercial area. So it will be higher density and transitional residential around our public and school sites. It also includes a subdivision map for single-family that will be coming on a portion of that larger area. The fourth item is White Rock Springs Ranch Maps, a residential design review for the maps that have now been reviewed and I believe finalized, and Steve will talk a little bit more about that in a little bit. We have design review and subdivision map of a portion of Mangini Ranch Phase 1C. And as you can see over here, this is Mangini Parkway and Savannah Parkway. So a portion of this area next to what we know as the existing neighborhoods and the elementary school site that's under construction. Right next door to that, we have another subdivision map approved for what's considered to be four-pack or, you know, detached but smaller lot subdivision in this area proposed. We also have, in late December, got an application for Mangini Place, St. Anton's, which is a proposed affordable apartment design review. I will just say, for the purposes of another item on your agenda this evening, this is for the planning entitlements. You are receiving input about a proposal for funding tonight, which is different than the entitlement. The next item is Toll Brothers Phase 2. You may recall that Toll Brothers came through in 2020 with consideration of an age-restricted community and the city council approved Phase 1 over here and Phase 1 here. This one is not an age-restricted part, subdivision of the community. They are coming back with Phase 2 and have started grading in this area and Steve's going to talk a little bit about that later, too. Over the last 90 days, the city council took a few actions, Planning Commission and City Council took a few actions, the Toll Brothers Subdivision Clubhouse Design Review. So if I go back to that last map, I'll show you where that is. The shops, extension of the commercial development approved on East Bidwell. White Rock Springs Ranch Villages 4 and 8 Residential Design Review. And the Creekstone Final Map, and just a couple slides highlighting those. So again, here's the Toll Brothers Clubhouse Design Review. Shops at Folsom Ranch Extension, so it had been approved previously and they wanted more time in order to exercise that approval. White Rock Springs Ranch Villages 4 and 8 by KB Homes. And finally, the Creekstone Final Map, which came before the city council for final approval. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Cron, our city engineer, to walk through the infrastructure, site engineering, and building activity.
Before you do that, can I ask you to back up to the slide just before the St. Anton slide? I just wanted to ask a quick question. That one. Are there other elevations in that, for that neighborhood or are those two going to be replicated?
Yes. Yes, there are other elevations. I just take excerpts in order to give a quick highlight of some of the things, but it's not reflective of all the materials or exhibits.
How reflective of the design is the one on the right side, the one that's called Modern Prairie?
I don't recall offhand how many exhibits there are, but I would be happy to follow up. All the information on these entitlements that have been submitted are available to the public, so I would be happy to provide those to you if you'd like to see them.
For whatever it's worth, I'm delighted by the fact that somebody made a facade design like that because it's unusual and a welcome change. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, Steve?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. I'll go through the remaining balance of the slides and kind of just give you an update of where we are, construction-wise, home improvement-wise, and map-wise. And so here's kind of a general overview of the activity that we have going on down there right now in the plan area. White Rock Springs Ranch Villages 2 through 7 in that area to the right. They were able to get Villages 2 and 3 paved last month with favorable conditions. And I might add that all the development areas were able to work fairly actively all the way through the fourth quarter. Favorable weather, decent temperatures, they were able to pave and finish a lot of construction that normally they wouldn't be able to do. And the work continues as time permits all the way through the winter and will continue all the way until the spring. So the other areas where we're seeing recent activity is Mangini Ranch Phase 2, Villages 4, 7, 8. We'll have slides that show them a little closer as we go through the presentation. The Rockcrest subdivision has been paved now. They're waiting, they've got their model home permits and they're ready to pull production as well. Toll Brothers is actively moving forward. They're hampered by the weather now, it's been wet and it's mainly grading, so they're going to have to work their way slowly through the winter. And then, of course, Creekstone subdivision there, that location, and then the ongoing activity in Mangini Phase 1, which is rapidly getting a lot of building permits and that's our most active home construction area at the moment. So the next slide's kind of a summary of our final, small lot final map activity. The final maps approved by city council are listed. Right now, we have 2,081 lots mapped. We have 551 lots pending on the maps that we currently have in review. We anticipate those small lot final maps that are submitted to be recorded sometime in the first or second quarter of this year. 2021, that is. Here's our annual report, which we provide online every month as far as the number of permits issued and the number of occupancies. I think as of January 1st of 2021, we're at 854 building permits and 561 building permits final. And when they're finalized, we expect move in shortly thereafter. This is the activity, just kind of a general overview of the mapped areas that are under construction. And we anticipate home construction continue on through the next couple of years. All these are active sites. Most of the infrastructure is complete and ready for home construction. So we expect to see, we've averaged in the fourth quarter, over 50 permits a month. I think we've averaged about 60 a month and we expect that number to stay steady and increase over this next couple of quarters with all these lots ready for home construction being paved and all the infrastructure in place.
Steve, can we correct the spelling on Russell Ranch?
Yes. That's two miles.
Thank you.
Okay, here's an overview, a nice aerial drone. These shots of them were taken on January 9th, so just about two weeks ago. They're fairly reflective of what's going on out there right now. In our neighborhood on the right, TriPoint is Creekstone there in the foreground. Taylor Morrison on the left, that's Villages 1 and 2. They're built out. I think all of their homes are now occupied. TriPoint is in the background, the school site you can see from a distance as well as Taylor Morrison. I think that's Zur and Dakota, too. And they're actively pulling permits in all of those subdivisions. Here are some of the locations of the model homes in those areas. TriPoint, Creekstone, they've issued their permit, but they're just, I think just poured their slab so they'll start going vertical here this week, probably or next week, weather permitting. Villages 3 through 5, those model homes there by TriPoint have also been out there for, I think about a year now. Taylor Morrison's Villages 6 and 7, that's not a great shot of them, but that's really Village 1. And then Villages 8 and 9 are, they're pretty much built out now and moving on into other developments. Lennar will be building homes in Villages 4 and 7 in White Rock Springs, which we'll see here shortly. Here's an aerial view from the north looking south. We try to label everything to give everybody a good perspective of what we're looking at. We labeled on here the Future Fire Station, it's on that lot there to the left of the Lennar Homes Rockcrest subdivision. That site has utilities stubbed to it and the improvement should be complete around there sometime this spring. The Future School Site and Park Site are labeled. You can see KB Homes in the enclave, it's covered, Lennar Homes there of Rockcrest, and then KB Homes Solio. We just issued their two first model homes this past two weeks and they're already going vertical on those.
Is that an elementary or the middle school site?
It's an elementary school site. And you can see in the top there above the fire station, that's the grading that was ongoing in the second, two quarters of 2021. That's Villages 1 and 2 for Mangini Phase 2 and you can see the tree there, the area around the tree that's been graded. So just a point of reference. Here are some of the Mangini Phase 2 builders. You can see Rockcrest model homes. They were able to get their pads in, but they should go in vertical very soon. The enclave models have been open there on the lower left and they're open. Solio, which we mentioned, in Villages 4 and 8, they're now going vertical. And then Signature Homes, we expect those models to be in Village 7. We expect them to be complete probably later, probably at the end of February. And they'll be open for tours. And here are the Russell Ranch neighborhoods. That's still ongoing. That's still ongoing. Russell Ranch, the subdivision, has been complete for over a year now. They're almost out of their warranty period, actually. So all we're seeing out there is basically home construction at this time. Three different builders, Anthem United, Meritage, and New Home, and they're pulling permits and rapidly building their homes. Model homes are under construction and production in all of those villages. Here are some, here's their models, the New Home Village Seven, they're up at the top. They're starting production on those, they have permits. New Home Village One, I think that's the same house, I believe, yeah. Anthem United Villages Six and Eight, they're in the first cul-de-sac, I believe, I forgot the name of it, but it's up there, they've been open for over a year, as with Village Four at the top of the hill. They've pulled about half of their permits on those units already, and I would expect them to potentially have all their permits pulled by the end of the calendar year. Hundred fourteen units. Here's an overview of White Rock Springs, a fairly good shot. You can see Village One in the bottom there. They're start, you can see the home construction for production. Their models are the ones in Jack Rabbit Court across from Mangini Parkway. They're pulling permits now for production in Village One. I believe they're going to be the builder in Villages Two and Three, that was paved, like I mentioned earlier, last month, so we could see some activity in Villages Two and Three, which is Phase Two of White Rock Springs this next quarter as well. JMC Homes, they have their models close to being complete. We expect those to be complete in February and open to the public, and you can see their production, they're already building just under Rock Springs Ranch Road there. That's where their production has started. So a lot of building activity, a lot of home construction, a lot of lots are ready for permits, so we expect to see our permit numbers increase monthly over the next two or three quarters, maybe all four quarters of this year. Where we're at 50, about 50 to 60 now a month, we expect that number to be between 60 and 80 potentially for several months during this calendar year. And here's the Car Trust models, the JMC models, they're up, as I mentioned, they're just about complete, and then Richmond American have been complete for over a year and been open to the public. Here is the most, the latest project that got started grading pretty heavily in the last quarter of 2020. This is the Toll Brothers, a good aerial shot of Toll Brothers. You can see some of the subdivision streets taking shape. Again, they've been hampered a little bit by the weather, but they're moving forward at a fairly rapid pace, and we expect them to pull permits here in the first quarter of this year, probably in the next month, month and a half, they should have their permits. They have 15 models they want to build with their first phase, and I think after that, I believe they have six or seven more. So they'll have a 22-model home complex built out there at some point here, most likely in the second quarter of this year will be complete. So they're moving rapidly through their process. Here are kind of the permits for the last, I think we had 100, and, these were total sales, excuse me. These were sales, we had 186 sales over the last quarter, which is pretty remarkable, and a total of 857, which is a little bit more than the permits we've issued at 854. But typically, when the house is sold, they pull the permit, they build the house. So those numbers are fairly consistent. We've identified the three projects below that we've seen already, where the model homes are construction, and we expect all of those model homes to be complete either in the first quarter of this year or early second quarter. So we expect, as I mentioned, the home, house construction to continue to upswing over the next several quarters. With that, I concluded. If anybody has any questions, I'm certainly glad to answer them if you have any.
Sarah?
Steve, could you go back maybe seven or eight slides? There was a picture of some houses with some lattice on top of the wall, and I want to ask you about that.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I know.
Is that attached to the wall, or is that something the homeowners are doing on the inside?
Yes and yes.
Yeah. You just want to pass it. Right there, bottom right.
That lattice is not supposed to be there.
Thank you.
We have provided notice, we've provided notice to the homeowner.
Okay.
The homeowner's been directed to remove it. We're going back and forth with the homeowner. He understands he needs to take it off the wall, because it's not permitted, but he wants to build a nine-foot wall behind it, you know, two feet away, so he thinks he can handle the code that way, but we're telling him he can only have a six-foot fence, so.
Okay.
We expect it to be gone here in the near, near future.
Good, thank you.
I think he was given 30 days to remove it.
But further to Sarah's point on that, he's telling you that he wants to build a nine-foot wall, isn't that against fire code?
Well, I'm not sure if it's against fire code, but it's against our code, it can only be six feet. So he's extended beyond a six feet with any kind of fencing material. So we've directed, we've noticed him, have a notice to correct to remove it. Not sure what the fire code says, but I'm sure it would be in violation.
No, but I think that's the reason for the six-foot fence.
Good to hear.
Steve, one other question. As you are well aware, there were some neighbors who were very concerned about some blasting that was taking place south of 50. As far as you know, were there any reports of damage as a result of that blasting?
We've had no reports of any damage. And just for, just so you know, Toll Brothers, excuse me, Toll Brothers project's been blasting for the last couple of months, and no one's really noticed. And we've had absolutely no reports of any structural or any damage to anybody's resident out there. And I think they probably, between the two or three different contractors that are blasting out there, they've had several hundred blasts have happened over the last three or four years, and we have no record of any damage.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
I don't.
Yeah, it's good information. I know, I used to sit there and listen to you all the time.
Yeah.
Last couple of years. I probably may, in a touch base with you offline, to understand a little bit more on the stats, the nice big chart on that one, and how the ratio of the single-family homes and apartments. When I look at one of the slides, it looks like 50% of the Folsom South is already been constructed or in the plans, if you can go maybe one or two slides. I shouldn't be extending too much here, but.
Can I go back farther?
Yeah. Maybe if you don't mind, you can put slide numbers on this, that way we can go down those ones next time.
I have them here, I failed to mention that, sorry about that.
Yeah, this one, right? When you look at this one, okay, Folsom South, the look and feel, that's all I'm saying. When I took the numbers, it's only 2,081 homes has been released, but the look is not that way. Maybe there is a multifamily homes has to come more down the road.
Yeah.
I have to understand that a little bit more, because this is 25-years project with 11,600 homes. We only built 2,081, but 50% of the land occupied.
Yes. Well, we keep, we keep track of the final map slots, and that's really what we have right now.
Yeah.
But we also keep track of the number of units. So the number of units will always coincide with the number of lots final mapped at some point, right, because they're mapped and ready for construction, but it doesn't include those multifamily properties. So like, for example, the Spanos apartment projects has, I think, 265 units. So you won't see that on the final map, but that'll be additional units that are being constructed down there on all those multifamily projects. So we keep track of them both. We keep track of the lots being mapped for the infrastructure as well as for the multifamily. So those unit totals are included, but they're not always reflected on the final map, because you don't need a final map for a multifamily project.
Got it.
But we still keep track of the number of units.
Yeah. Thank you, Steve. I know, you always be very clear and very informative.
We have, we have these exhibits available, if you'd like a larger-sized copy. We can provide you a copy of some of the documents that are shown here at a larger scale, so you can better understand really what's going on, because it's hard to really pick out a lot of different features by looking at the maps upon the slides.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Is there anybody in the audience that has a question or would like to add a comment? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Pam. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Let's call the next item.
Your next item is item number three, economic and budget overview presentation.
Stacy Tumani, Finance Director and CFO. Tonight's presentation will be an update on the city's major revenue sources that have been most significantly impacted by COVID-19, and I'll be primarily focused on sales taxes. Just about a week ago, we met with our sales tax consultants to go over the results of the first quarter of the fiscal year, that's the period July 1st through September 30th, and we now have a pretty good idea of where we're headed for the rest of this fiscal year and into the next. I wanted to come up here tonight and give you that update as soon as possible, so I'm doing this abbreviated financial report tonight. And then at your next meeting on February 9th, I'll be back to give you your regular quarterly update that will include all city revenues and expenditures through December 31st, and then I'll also present the results of the fiscal year 20 financial audit at that time. At the end of the presentation tonight, too, I'll be just taking a minute to go over a new budget document requirement that's been introduced by the Government Finance Officers' Association, otherwise known as the GFOA. We'll begin our look tonight at the sales tax results for the first quarter of the fiscal year, and they're broken down by category. We have results for Folsom there on the left, and then Sacramento Valley as a whole, and then California as well, and I had them all on here so that you could see how we compare to these bigger regions. We have different categories that our, our sales tax results are tracked in. We have general retail, food products, transportation, which includes our car sales, construction, where like home improvement projects would be included, and then our business-to-business, and that's all included in our local business activity, that are, those are sales that happen within Folsom. And we have the other category there at the bottom, which is the countywide pool activity. So what we're seeing for Folsom for this quarter, and remember that's July 1st through September 30th, is general retail was down about 7.6% for the quarter, 12.5% annually. And these annual numbers include all of the COVID restrictions now being included in this final number. We have food products, which includes restaurants, that were down 14.7% for the quarter and 12% annually. Transportation, which is our auto sales, was fairly flat this quarter compared to the same quarter in the prior year, but then annually were down about 6.6%. Construction is up 21.7% this quarter over last year and up 11.5% annually. And then business-to-business is about 1.6% quarter over quarter and down 26.5%, but that one fluctuates year over year anyways. So what we see for Folsom is that we have a 4.4% decrease quarter over quarter, and we're down 11.1% annually. If we look at the line underneath that, the countywide pool activity, we see that we had an increase of about 38%, and these are online sales. Something that I want to mention about that big increase of the 38% is that, starting in October, the quarter October 1st through December 30th of 2019, there was AB 147 wasn't acted, and what that did is it, it had companies such as Wayfair and Amazon require them to report their sales tax if it was being shipped to our county, they had to send a sales tax to our county. So we're getting a bump up from that, which we've, we've known about, but this is the first quarter where we're seeing it being compared. So the 38% increase includes that new revenue that's coming in, but it's being compared to a quarter that didn't include that revenue. So the next time, if I have this chart, we won't see such a large increase quarter over quarter in the countywide pool. But we are seeing an increase. What we haven't seen is that there's an increase in spending overall. What we are seeing is the shift in spending from retail sales in stores to online sales, which makes sense, and people are at home and can just buy things online. So this chart, I thought, was a good way to, to just show what's happening. This is the annual per capita sales tax per person, what their average spending has been, and what we see at the bottom of this chart is that, on average, it's about $270 per capita for, for sales tax that we bring in per person. Color-coded here, general retail at the top, food products next, transportation in blue, then we have construction, business-to-business, a little bit of miscellaneous in the county pool. And if we just compare the two right-hand columns, we can see that it averaged, you know, $86 to $89 general retail, but we went down to about $80 general retail. And then if we pop down to the bottom of the column, we can see that the county pool, it was about $40 worth of this, this total amount, and now we're up to 51. So we've just seen that transition of spending in stores down to the county pool, and as I've mentioned in other presentations, we get less of the amount that comes to the county pool, because it gets spread amongst all the jurisdictions. And just so that you guys also know, our, our general sales that come in through the city accounts for about 80% of our sales tax revenue, and the county pool is about 20. So what does this mean for Folsom? This graph here shows the sales tax trends that we've had from fiscal year 11, 12, through our current fiscal year in the dark blue, and then I added a couple of forecasted years. With the results we've seen so far and in consulting with our sales tax advisors, we're still projecting that our sales tax results will be about 22.8 million, which was our budget number. It's about a 1% above the fiscal year 20 final results, so we can see we're fairly flat compared to where we ended up last year. That was with that last quarter being completely shut down, and so we had a big impact there. Right now, my initial projection, looking forward to fiscal year 22, is that we could expect to see just over a 6% increase, that'd be due to some recovery, and that we would be followed by more moderate growth of about 4% in the following year. What I did is I inserted this orange line here, too, so that you could see where we were headed had this downturn not occurred. And what this is showing is the, the trajectory where sales tax had been going up, just an average increase every year, now we're down to 22.8 million, and if we continue to grow just a slight growth every year, we'll be well behind where we would have been had this not happened. So we're not seeing the recovery going straight back up to our high point before. What this chart is projecting is that it will take us until the end of fiscal year 22, 23, to get back to where we were in fiscal year 18, 19. The issue for us is that's a $5 million difference every single year compared to where we might have been, which means that we have a structural issue with our expenditures, because they were on a similar trajectory up. And we do have other revenue sources that are coming in, but this is just something that we need to be aware of. And just a couple other comments, our forecast here, if there's additional virus mutations or issues with the vaccine, we, these could change if we have to have continued shutdowns, and it could be a setback to our recovery. This next slide here takes a look at the four major revenue sources that have been most affected by COVID-19. And as I mentioned, I'll go deeper into all of our other revenue expenditures at your next meeting, but I just wanted to focus on the four here. At the top, as we've gone over, we're projecting sales tax to come in at budget, 22.8 million, and we're also projecting transient occupancy tax, which is our TOT tax from hotels, to come in at budget of 1.3 million. But even if it's coming in at budget, that's still 47% decrease from normal levels. The third on our list is our Parks and Recreation Program revenues. We're projecting revenues by the end of the fiscal year to be at 1.2 million, or 46% of our budgeted amount. When we had initially budgeted for these revenues, we had not anticipated the additional surges and just the continued restriction on, on what we'd be able to do, so they've been severely reduced this year. And just for context, that projection of 1.2 million is only 25% of what a normal year might have brought in, in this revenue source. The other area we're keeping our eye on is ambulance fees. With the trend we've seen so far, we're projecting that fees will come in below budget at about $4 million, about a $425, $100 shortfall. Comparing this year to last year, the transports were at 218 versus 362 at the same time this year, so it's just been a slowdown there, too. And we will continue to monitor that to see if it changes. So in summary, and looking ahead to next year, we're projecting that sales tax revenues will take at least two years to recover just back to our 18, 19 levels, resulting in two to three years of significant lost revenue from this source. There will be continued pressure that limits the city's ability to reverse the cuts that were made to balance this year's budget. We had some pretty significant cuts with the revenues being flat, especially the big ones like sales tax and TOT. It's just going to, we're going to need to keep continued pressure on, on any of those expenditures rising. And then it's an important reminder, as we continue this fiscal year and as I make some of these presentations, that when I'm saying that we've hit budget projections in many categories, those budget assumptions were severely cut in a lot of cases, and so meeting those assumptions just indicates that our projections were fairly accurate, not that those revenue sources are back at normal levels. So that concludes the financial presentation. So that concludes the financial portion of tonight's presentation. And I'd like to transition on to the presentation of the budget principles. The GFOA is the Oversight Agency for our Budget Document Certificate Program. And every year, we submit our budget to this program to be considered for the Certificate of Excellence. The GFOA has issued a few new requirements. And the purpose of it is to help agencies and our departments focus their performance measures that are presented in the budget every year towards a a strategic goal, a specific strategic goal. And so as we head into the budget season in the next couple of months, we wanted to be sure that we have your continued approval of the strategic goals that we presented in the budget in the past, and that we'll continue to um have the department heads focus their performance measures towards. So right now, I just wanted to quickly go through the list. And then at your next meeting, if possible, we'd like to have you just give feedback on these and make sure that you're still okay with these being presented in the budget this way, and if you have any additional input or edits that you would like. So first and foremost, the budget must be balanced. So I I left that one off the list because that that one will stay. But otherwise, the budget should maintain the functional balance of services that provide the unique Folsom experience. The budget should allocate financial resources based on functional priorities and programmatic goals. The budget should ensure that the financial stability of the city is sustainable beyond the next fiscal year. It should ma- maintain effectiveness of our primary services and functions, maintain or grow the general fund balance. Consider alternative service delivery models in order to preserve services to the community. It should be transparent to the public, be accountable for results, and be responsive to the community. So I will leave you with those. And if you have any questions or comments.
Sarah?
So I'm a little bit confused about the the revenue from the county pool. So um our share of the the sales tax from the county pool is related to our percentage of brick and mortar sales countywide.
Correct.
And the more people shop online instead of going to a brick and mortar store, means we get less of the county pool.
If we go down more compared to other jurisdictions. If we all go down, then we're gonna get our same percentage that we've gotten in another quarter.
Okay. And I was under the assumption that um uh let's say the second half of 2020, basically during the pandemic, that more people in Folsom were shopping online than other parts of the county, right?
Yeah.
So our percentage of the county pool went down.
Correct.
But when your slide shows that the 38% increase, that's where I'm confused.
So the county pool in total increased because people were shopping online. So it so if somebody's shopping in another area within the county, we're still gonna get a percentage of that as well. So that that helps. And the percentage increase that I was showing there also is because of that Wayfair decision, the AB 147, I think it was. So there's that increase quarter over quarter as well, where those those people were still shopping. They were still buying something that maybe came from a different state, and that revenue was going somewhere else. Now, when somebody makes that same purchase, it's just coming into to our county pool. We're getting a percentage of it. So the increase looks like people are spending more on online sales. But really, what we're seeing there is people are spending the same. We're just getting more of it instead of another state getting some of it. Does that?
Okay, so but like just for us, I mean, dollar for dollar, did is our share of the county pool higher this year than last year?
No, our share of it is has gone, it went down during the quarter that we had been discussing a few months ago. It popped back up a tiny bit. Every quarter, it's gonna fluctuate a little bit, just depending on our ratio of in-store sales through, you know, compared to the rest in the county. But for the most part, it stays fairly flat because we don't shift that much.
Okay, but but the message of shop local still applies, basically, yeah.
Absolutely, and that's where we're seeing on that bar chart where it's gone down to the county pool. It's still being dispersed, and we don't get as much of it. We're getting some from other jurisdictions as well because it does get spread. But that's still definitely the message, that we don't get as much of it. And it's only 20% of of how much we bring in versus the bigger pot um coming in from direct sales.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Perhaps we should encourage everybody in the rest of the county to shop online.
Yes, if they did that, that would help.
All right, um Carrie, any questions?
I I think we'd be better off to encourage them to shop in Folsom.
Of course.
I don't have questions.
YK?
In terms of the short on revenue projections to the return in first quarter, how many millions of dollars at least?
Right now, I I don't have information on all of our revenue sources that'll come in in two weeks. So right now, we're short just under 2 million on on these four sources.
It's on the first quarter sales tax revenue, 2 million down, which is on an average 10% or 9% of the that fund. Am I saying it right?
Um, could you ask that question again?
Yeah, usually our sales tax revenue is around 24, 25 millions, right? And we are short of around 2 millions to 3 millions, I'm just based on these numbers.
Oh, yeah, year over year, we're short. We budgeted this amount, so our expenditures were planned to meet this level of revenue for this year. So I don't consider that a budget shortage, but we are short compared to where we were in prior years, for sure.
We we budgeted for retraction in the revenues when we did the budget for 2021.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense. No, I was comparing to the previous year before before Corona. And on a 17, 18 fiscal year was 22 millions, and it jumped 3-plus millions in 18, 19. A- anything, I just want to understand what that jump is, any special significance?
Those were timing collections. When when it gets averaged out, um that's why I kind of put the orange line here. We there are fluctuations like this, or if somebody pays late, e- especially if it's a big um company, we get the late payment, it'll come early in the next quarter of the fiscal year. Those types of things cause those that fluctuation.
Got it, got it. And at the beginning, you said it is Q1 numbers. I I was patting myself before even heard that Q1, wow, Q2, they just ended Q2 just, you know, 20 days ago. I can see the numbers here. I was banking on the technology, but that's not the case.
Well, we'll have it for everything else. The sales tax, actually, that's the way the state works. So the companies have time to remit it, and then we don't get it until the end of December.
That's right. Thank you, Stacy.
Any questions from the audience? Okay, hearing none, thank you, Stacy. All right, please call the next item.
Your next item this evening is your consent calendar.
Is there a motion, or would anybody like to discuss? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Zikino?
Yes.
Chalam Charla?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes.
Okay, that takes you to old business. Item number seven, this is a presentation regarding the impacts of organics recycling mandated by SB 1383 and direction to staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Dave Nuzen, Public Works Director. Everybody's favorite topic, right? Here we go. So tonight, I'm gonna update you on a presentation I gave back in November of 2019. At that time, we were going through our rate study. We were looking at what's coming under SB 1383 and um trying to forecast during those rates what that would entail. Tonight on the phone, I have Marie McKee, our General Services Manager, as well as Mark Rappaport, our, what is his title, Environmental Specialist Supervisor, but we just call him our organics guru. So the presentation tonight, I'll go over um the background of the law, how it came into being, what they're trying to achieve under the law, as well as the requirements and timeline um for implementation. And some of the organics capacity procurement required for us to achieve under under this uh plan. I'll go over the strategic plan, and I'll talk about the impacts. And that's probably where I'll spend a lot of the time and probably try and answer a lot of the questions. So as background, like I said, back in September of 2016, the governor signed this into law. The the main goal of this law is to reduce short-lived um sh- short-lived climate pollutants, mostly methane, that's what they're targeting. The regulations, however, were not finalized for us to begin our planning and implementation of this until November of last year. So the the great planning that they tried to achieve by passing this and giving us four years to implement basically backfired because they couldn't get the regulations finalized. So we couldn't really plan at the time, and we couldn't uh do more during our previous rate study. And that's really important for for everybody to understand. Uh, the regulations do take effect, however, January 1st, 2022. We have been in communication, as have been uh many other jurisdictions uh in our region and throughout the state, trying to convince CalRecycle to push back the timeline due to the COVID pandemic. We and everybody else have been unsuccessful in in that effort, so we have to move ahead. Uh, like I said, the the main two goals um under this law uh is to reduce methane. The uh first goal that they have mandated is to reduce organics waste by 75% by 2025, which is our typical, uh oh, power outage.
Partial power outage.
It's windy out there.
Yeah.
Just by the way, we've already got three down, three trees down in the city, so we're we're keeping track of that as we go along here. The other portion of the law, uh, which is probably less well-known, is a food recovery program needs to be instituted, which is um saving food from uh generators such as uh, you know, stores, the Costcos, Safeways, all, you know, all the big chains that end up throwing away or disposing of food when it ends uh when it loses its sell-by date. Um, the idea is that we're going to have to ju- uh develop a program to recover 20% of that and redistribute it to um food closets, food shelter, or food um recovery programs. So that's gonna be an interesting um undertaking, for sure. So we're just the uh the the.
Dave, does does that need to be a new diversion? I mean, suppose Costco or somebody is already, you know, because of their own green initiatives, doing a diversion?
We need to demonstrate that it's be- that much is being diverted.
Okay.
So I I think the the intent of the law is we want 20% of anything that was going, you know, they 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 don't know what that number is, nor do we.
Okay.
So that's part of the the process that we have to go through.
We could get credit for an existing program, theoretically at least.
Theoretically, I believe that is true.
Thank you.
Would probably be a good idea to at least contact um the Twin Lakes Food Bank to find out how much they're getting from other sources.
Yeah.
I know they get a fair amount of stuff, I believe it's from grocery outlet, but I don't know that anybody else is
Yeah, we're we're.
is doing that. And Lisa Tudor would be a good contact, and actually, Rosaria's on the board, so.
There are several sources that it comes from.
And we'll work with the county as well. I think they're mandated, as far as the county, to do it countywide, to work with the cities because they don't want, you know, food desert areas to go unsupplied. So they're gonna, you know, it's kind of a regional um approach that they're gonna take. So why are they targeting the organic waste? Because it's the the largest waste stream in California, believe it or not. Um, it it comprises 2/3 of the waste stream, which is actually kind of uh, I I guess you wouldn't really think of it that way, but that's what the numbers show. And in Folsom, we generate about 9,000 tons of green waste currently. And we're projecting to um, we're projecting that we currently generate approximately 1,500 tons of food waste. As I said before, um, the other, the other portion of it is to capture the the food because in California, all these statistics, 1 in 8 Californians um are food insecure, and 1 in 5 children. And we throw away more than 6 million tons of food every year, which is pretty astonishing. One, one little tidbit of information is for every 2 and 1/2 tons of food rescued, it's equivalent to taking one car off the road for a year. So it can add up quite a bit. Uh, why are they targeting methane gas again? Uh, it's a super pollutant, uh, it's short-lived, it's very powerful in what it does. It breaks down ozone, it creates uh, you know, the greenhouse gases, uh, or greenhouse effect. Contributes to rising sea levels, reduce snowpack, wildfires, drought. Statistics about, you know, what what their last drought uh created as far as an economic impact of $2.7 billion and 20,000 jobs. Uh, landfills actually produce 21% of the entire amount of methane. I won't tell you where what number 1 and number 2 are, but they are both related to cows. So what do we have to do for for Folsom? A whole bunch of stuff. Uh, we have to provide organics collection services to all residents and businesses, establish, as I said, an edible food recovery program, conduct an enormous amount of education and outreach to the community and our business um community as well. We have to procure recyclable and recovered or or recovered organics products. So um we have to basically use recycled paper, we have to use composting. Um, all the, all the things generated from this process, we then have to consume. Uh, we have to secure access to recycling and edible food recovery capacity, which is, we have to have a place for all this to go. And I think that's part of the lesson from the recycling market. It's great, we can recycle all this stuff, but if we have nowhere to put it, now what? And that's kind of where we are in our recycling. This mandates us to not only have the program, but have a place to put it as well. So we've we've taken steps to get there as well, um, and I'll I'll touch on that a little bit more. And most importantly, we have to monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. So this law comes with the mandate that we must enforce, which is different than uh previous mandates that have come through the recycling uh laws in the past. So as I said, uh, we have to institute this program by January 1st, 2022. It comes with a two-year education and outreach timeline built into it. So we must begin enforcement in January of 2024. Um, however, as I'll touch on in a little bit, uh, CalRecycle will be looking at our program immediately, starting January 1st, 2021. They will be looking at how we're rolling this out, are we in compliance? Do we have, have we done all the prescriptive measures that are in the law to um make this law successful in their eyes? This law requires an extensive amount of record keeping. As you can see on the screen, uh, we have to track all these uh sectors of 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 our operations, from services to waivers, education outreach, recycled organic waste procurement. We have to monitor and track all this information. It has to be in our recording, and that's one of the things that CalRecycle is gonna watch to see how, not only are we doing it, but how accessible it is for not only them, but the public as well, that anybody wants to come in and ob- observe what we're doing.
Dave, do you have any idea how we're gonna get um the information for the um the edible food in the commercial?
No, I don't know.
Are we gonna have to force them to provide us with data?
From the the gro- the the generators?
Yeah.
Yes, that's mandated under the law that they must provide that to us. So any generator has to to demonstrate what they're disposing of, and is it recoverable?
Wow.
Yeah. It this is, this is the most co- comprehensive law to hit this market in the past 30 years. It's it's very um very broad-reaching. So as I said earlier, CalRecycle is gonna be the Oversight Agency from the state. They're gonna begin looking at our program in 2022 when we roll it out. The interesting thing, and I've kind of said this a couple of times, is that what's different specifically about this law is it's prescriptive. And it it gives us a list of things that we must do, and that results in what they consider compliance. In previous laws, we were able to um provide good-faith efforts towards meeting a goal. However, there are no goals set regionally or jurisdictionally for this program. It is specifically, you must do these things. So it's it's quite a, quite a bit different, and it requires a lot more tracking and and record-keeping on our part. Uh, planning, I've said this a hundred times, uh, it's an unfunded mandate. I I mentioned earlier, the current rates include some of the funding that we could reasonably forecast, and it was uh essentially an administrative employee in drivers. We knew we were gonna need drivers, we didn't know how the regulations were gonna affect our operations. So we made an educated guess that we could um defend under the Prop 218 notice and how that was gonna roll out. So, you know, we could only raise rates according to what we knew we were gonna be um subject to as far as cost. So we did our best under that, but um we need to go back. to as far as cost, so we did our best under that, but um we need to go back and revisit that. Uh, other programs that are not included, we, we didn't know what the food recovery program looked like at the time, so that was totally put off, and uh, as it says there, additional rate increases will be unavoidable. Uh, I mentioned the, the recycling capacity. Um, another interesting piece to the law is, we had to go out and make sure that we had a place to um process this, these materials, the organics. We were successful in doing that, we partnered with the Sacramento County and the City of Sacramento in an RFP program. Um, relatively speaking, our waste stream is very small compared to the county and the City of Sacramento, so we worked with them, um, we found a vendor who is gonna be able to provide us short-term, um, and what we consider short-term is, is at least six years, with the possibility of up to ten years. Um, after six years, it goes year over year. We have the, an, an out clause where if we give them an, a year's notice, we can get out of the contract if more facilities come online with, that are more cost-effective. Unfortunately, those don't exist right now. Um, this current vendor also, or contractor uh, has plans to construct a anaerobic digestion facility in the long term, but, you know, they, they can't lay out the capital until they start getting their money stream coming in, so it will be, probably be, you know, five years down the line before they can get to that point. Uh, what we can say right now is that our existing residential service will remain kind of as it is. We have a three-can system, we will remain a three-can system or three carts. We will continue to use uh gray for garbage, we will continue to use blue for recycling, and now the green will not only be our green waste, but it will also be our organics. Part of the, the negotiation with the vendor is that we will be allowed to use compostable bags to put into the green waste that handles, that has all of our food waste in it, and they will, they will separate it at their facility. Um, one thing that's a, a challenge with this system, however, is what we would have hoped to do was to go, go from a weekly garbage service to a weekly green waste service and switch the garbage to bi-weekly, because theoretically speaking, uh, there's nothing, I love this word, protrusible, in the garbage anymore that will rot and stink, so it can go for two weeks. Um, unfortunately, at this time, Sacramento County, which would uh allow that under their health department, uh, is not allowing that. So we're hoping that at some point we can do that. Um, you can imagine we're, we'll have to go to a bi-weekly recycling, but weekly garbage and weekly green waste, so.
Dave, has there been any conversation with um the acting executive at Sac County to um, to point this out?
I don't know what discussions have been made yet. Um, I, I know that, you know, again, we're not the only one in, that's, that's trying to tackle this. I know the county is under a lot of pressure right now, given their last rate uh that they went to the board with, being told, no, you can't go that high. So uh, I would imagine that there's gonna be a lot more pressure from them to try and trim costs, and that will be a, a huge cost savings, to, to be able to go to bi-weekly garbage service, because you're running less vehicles, less often, with less travel.
Right, it doesn't make any sense to me that they're, that they're considering not allowing that.
Yeah, and, and not only that, I mean, just in my opinion, you know, if you think about it, what better way to incentivize somebody to do the organics than to not pick up anything that they put in their garbage and it's gonna stink more, I mean.
Right.
But from a health and safety concern, that's not acceptable, so.
And are we gonna, may we find ourselves in a position where we need to provide those compostable bags to the residents to ensure that they get used?
I'll get there, I'm getting there.
Sorry, didn't mean to get ahead of you.
So uh, so I wanted to give kind of a, a snapshot of, of where we were, what we, what our program used to look like, where we currently are, and where we have to go with thirteen eighty-three. So prior to all of this forecasting of thirteen eighty-three, we were able to take our green waste to Kiefer Landfill, and they would use it as alternative daily cover. We got diversion credits, we only had to haul our, our, our green waste out there, and we were paying thirty dollars a ton um to dispose of it. And unfortunately, under, I don't remember which law it was, I can probably look it up, I think it was AB. It's another, another law that we were mandated to do for the alternative daily cover, that um expired, so we were no longer able to get credit for that. So we had to, we knew we had to make a switch, we were able to adjust that during our rate study, and we anticipated that, so that's where we are currently. Now we're taking our green waste to our new contractor, which is further away. We still receive our diversion credits, we're still only hauling green waste, but now the cost has gone to fifty dollars a ton, because we can't get diversion credits unless we dispose of it and it's composted, and Kiefer stopped doing that. So we had, we, we knew we had to get a, a new vendor. Um, so you can see, we forecasted thirty-four dollars a ton and we're paying fifty already. What thirteen eighty-three is gonna have to do is, we're gonna have the same vendor, taking it to the same location, we're still gonna receive that, our green waste and food waste tonnage will go up by fifteen hundred tons, we estimated, but now because we introduced organics and it's more cumbersome for our vendor or our contractor to handle and separate and process, the cost goes up to ninety-seven dollars a ton. And this is all negotiated rates, so this is, we know that these are, are good numbers, and that starts January twenty twenty-two.
Is there escalation on those rates?
Yes.
Into the contracts?
There are. So as I had mentioned.
Mike, can, can you explain that?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Escalation?
How, how long would the contract be, starting in twenty twenty-two, and what is the escalation rate that you'd expect on that ninety-seven dollars from year to year?
Yeah, I, I don't know the exact amount, but it's, it's tied to the, the, on a normal.
Super price index or something like that?
Yeah, the super price index.
That ninety-seven will go up by some percentage every year?
Okay.
And, and we have that, and we, we anticipate what that will be. Um, the hope is that, you know, once, once they can get an, a, a new facility built, and other fo- folks in the region may build facilities, that there will be more competition out there and we can renegotiate or get out of the contract in, in the sixth year. We're already a year into it, so we'll be able to, we think the timing's gonna be good for everybody, as good as it could be. Uh, it's the cost impacts here for um, for all this, again, processing from curbside collection, our edible food uh capacity, we don't know what that looks like still. We need staffing for the development, ongoing man- management and education, record-keeping, inspections, enforcement. Collection staff, we're gonna have more vehicles, we need more drivers, we need more trucks. We need more containers, believe it or not, we have thirty-five hundred residents that do not have a green waste container in our city. Now we have to provide them a container, that, that's a cost. Uh, collection vehicles, I had mentioned, and additional miles because of the location, as well as promotional supplies for startup, which would be bags, and um, bags to every customer, and food waste bins, we're anticipating about fifty percent of the, of the residents will request a bin, and we'll be able to provide that. So what does that look like in dollars? What we tried to do here was, we anticipated uh a certain amount from our existing rates, and we have the current interim program that we know already, the tipping fees that I had mentioned, we anticipated thirty-four dollars, they're up at fifty. So you can see, we're already running a deficit of about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year there. Um, additional maintenance, because we're now driving further than we were before, so that's additional maintenance on the vehicles. So currently, we're running a little bit of a deficit, about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. When we start doing the, this expanded residential uh collection, we know that our tipping fees are going from fifty to, to uh, uh, ninety-seven dollars a ton, and going from nine thousand tons to ten thousand five hundred tons, so there's six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars a year that we don't have built into our rates whatsoever. Um, so all those down the line, I won't go through them all, we still don't know what the procurement requirement's gonna be, or the edible food waste capacity, we don't know what that looks like yet. Um, we'll have to make some educated um assumptions for that during our rates, based on what other jurisdictions are experiencing. Um, so in a nutshell, this is real high-level look at it, the residential rates just for this program, we know we're running a deficit of about four dollars a resident already. Um, commercial, about twenty-nine dollars a month. Those aren't, those are not insignificant numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Even to add insult to injury, um, our one-time implementation to get this going, and probably more importantly, for our residential collection trucks, uh, we're anticipating four, we'll need four trucks additional to our fleet, um, 'cause there's only so many hours in the day we can go and collect this and, and haul it all the way down to our, our facility, at about one point five million dollars. I think the, the, the bigger challenge that we actually will face with this is the lead time in procuring those vehicles is over a year. I don't know how we can roll out a program in eleven months when it takes over a year to get the vehicles to do it, but we'll try and figure it out. Uh, curbside containers, again, those are the thirty-five hundred additional containers, compostable bags, kitchen containers, all these things add up to about one point eight million dollars, if you divide that by the number of residents, it's about a seventy-nine dollar, seven, eight, we'll call it eighty-dollar cost per resident. Anticipating, smoothing that out over two to three years, we're looking at at least two to three dollars additionally per month, just for that initial startup. Bringing such good news.
Bad news does not get better with age.
So one of the reasons I wanted to, to get uh in, in front of you tonight and give you this dire news is uh, we need staffing. Um, and, and to make it very blunt, we would like to get two environmental specialist positions added to the existing fiscal year twenty-one budget, if, and rather than wait until going through the budget process, um, many other jurisdictions out there right now are, are hiring these positions, the qualified candidates, we're hoping will come to Folsom. Um, if we don't act quickly, we could, you know, the, the pool's getting smaller, so we'd like to get that. Um, additionally, um, our recycling guru has plans to retire, and he's shared that with us. Uh, he plans to retire um probably this fiscal year, so we'd like to get somebody in as quickly as possible to download that knowledge and, download all of that knowledge and, and uh, try and get somebody in to help build the program as well, and it's important that, you know, somebody comes in on the ground floor of a program like this and really knows the ins and outs of what we're trying to accomplish as we go along. So um, with your concurrence, we will bring back an item to you to add that to um, an uh, an action at a later date, um, probably in the next meeting or two, to get that um done. And secondly, we'd like to proceed with the rate study as soon as possible. Um, we really think it's important to begin the process, um, notify residents, notify the businesses. We've tried to be as, as open and, and communicative as we can be with everybody, letting them know this is coming, but now we know kind of what the impacts really are looking like. You know, we need to start that process, it's not a, it's not a short process, uh, you know, and we wanna take our time and do it right, and, and let everybody have their say, and hopefully, you never know, maybe there's enough pressure on Cal Recycle that, you know, they'll, they'll push it back a little bit and let us kind of catch our breath and uh let this pandemic pass.
Gotcha. Well, this is a uh, a public hearing, um, so questions from the council first, we'll see if anybody in the audience would like to comment, and then bring it back to the council for some sort of uh action or advice. Sarah?
Yes, thank you, Dave. Um, so I think I, like many people, put my garbage into a plastic bag before I stick it in my garbage can. How will anyone know if I throw away something that should be in the green waste can?
I don't know, um, to be honest with you. I, I think, you know, honestly, um, I believe that the, the mandated en- uh enforcement requires monitoring, well, we will probably be what we call lifting lids and inspecting people's garbage to see what's in it.
You're gonna have to install a kitchen cam, Sarah.
And I, I can just envision people putting all kinds of things down their garbage disposal that should not go down their garbage disposal, uh, because there is nowhere they're going to do this.
Marcus will love that.
Yeah, I'm sure he will. So are, are all foods considered organic waste? I mean, they want us to put our meat in the green waste can?
Correct.
Okay, which is disgusting. Okay.
Oranges, banana peels, food scraps.
Yeah, but, so I'm told that there's money in organic recycling, is that true? I mean, I know regular recycling used to be a source of revenue for the city, now we have to pay, but is it possible that this is a source of revenue for the city?
It is for the contractor that we have to pay.
It is for the contractor, that, you know, they can, they can do um, there, there's lots of, you know, fertilizer that they can generate, a lot of composting.
But not for us.
Well, we'll, we'll be, actually, it's in our contract, we'll, we'll actually purchase it back from him as well. That's because we're required to, a- at a reduced rate, so we'll be able to service our parks and rec facilities with material at a reduced rate.
Okay.
So there might be a little bit of cost savings, but we're not talking a lot.
Um, and then, you know, of course, the question that we're gonna get from the public, because we're in, we just finished year one of a five-year rate increase, and they're gonna say, okay, you, you didn't know all of the ins and outs of the program, we get that, but why didn't you wait to raise our rates until you did know all of the ins and outs?
Um, mostly because of the recycling crash, and we were doing the best we could to, to try to get to that point. Um, the, the market, you know, we used to get uh, you know, a several hundred thousand dollars a year in recycled materials as far as revenue back into the system. Um, that, the cost of vehicles, uh, you know, there were a nu- a number of factors where we couldn't quite make it to that finish line, and we knew that if we didn't act prior to this coming out, we would've been running a huge structural deficit in our, in our fund. Um, even, even prior to the rate increase, I think we were forecast to be in a, about a million-dollar deficit by the end of this fiscal year, had we not done that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Um, you mentioned a couple number of households that don't have the green waste.
Correct, about thirty-five hundred homes.
About thirty-five hundred. So is it fair to say that they will probably have minimal um organic waste, but they'll still have to pay for the service?
Yep, exactly, and um, you know, that's part of the operational study that we're undertaking currently, is trying to identify um what is the best mode for collections, for, you know, a lot of people that don't generate a lot of green, true green waste, that this is mostly gonna be organics, how do we collect something? Do we go to a smaller container?
Mm-hmm.
If we go to a smaller container, now we have to retrofit our vehicles, or retrofit our collection systems in order to accommodate that. So there's a number of steps that we have to really dig into to figure out how to get there efficiently.
Anecdotally, my daughter decided that we were gonna compost all of our green waste two summers ago, and we struggled to fill up a five-gallon bucket.
Yeah.
In a week, so there's just not that much volume of like kitchen scraps and inside organic waste.
Right.
To be had in some instances.
Well, don't forget.
And I like eating leftovers, so.
Don't forget your, your grease-soaked pizza boxes, those are, those can go in there too.
Also the, okay, excellent, all right. Carrie, any questions? Okay, YK?
Yeah, um, Dave, I know you mentioned about the county, they are not allowing to pick up the garbage every two weeks, even though we are going to change the bags, all the rotting thing, and we're going to make that code, right? Everybody is going to use it. I remember Sarah was asking the same question in last November also, how do we handle if somebody is going to not put in that trash? Uh, we're all in this, and revenues are going down across the world, and can we go back to county to make the, a strong say, not just Folsom alone, all the cities in town, and let them reconsider one more time to pick up the garbage every two weeks and switch with the green and seeing it? We have to go, you know, and, and all together, not just Folsom, one guy go and speak.
Well, yeah, I, I think the county, I mean, you know, you got the right hand and the left hand of the county, they're two different departments, and I think they're not in agreement either. I, I'm sure that their, their solid waste sanitation want to go to bi-weekly, and the health department says, no, you can't, it's not safe.
Yeah.
That's something we're gonna work through and, and, and push harder to work with the county themselves and, and their other departments, as well as the City of Sacramento, um, and other collector, you know, other, other agencies that do self-collection, and that's probably the biggest key is, uh, you know, the, the contractual haulers out there that, that do, like Ranch Cordova, you know, it's just another route for them, they, they just add it on their list and off they go. Um, they have the, the capacity within their existing infrastructure being vehicles and cans, the just, it's just another step for them. For us, it requires, you know, a million point five outlay of, for vehicles.
Yeah.
To get that going, so it's, it's a little more of a challenge for us.
Yeah, I, I hear you though, what you're saying, but I'm not fully uh agreeing. Uh, waste collection, I don't think so, they'll make one more free trip, I'm just saying it, right? Adding one more trip shouldn't be, because it is cost on them. Anyway, long story short, that's what I'm thinking. Anyway, long story short, that's what I'm thinking. We've got to go back as a united cities in front of supervisors. Let them handle their departments, how they want to handle it. And as you said, it is going to be one point five million dollars to bring those four vehicles, right? And even we don't get that one on time because of that. Just think about those. That's a big ticket item I can see yet. And other ones, probably we can talk. I know you explained very well the other time to me, so thank you.
Yeah, and just to revisit that point, it's, it's not that we don't want to get there. It's like, right now, we're being told no. And in order to meet our January first timeline, we've got to proceed.
Yeah, we gotta work.
If we can unwrap, if we can unwind that during this process, during the rate study, if that happens to not happen, well, then we just don't raise the rates as much.
But I don't understand that, though.
We need to work on parallel tracks. He has got to press ahead with certain aspects of his planning to meet the deadlines that are imposed that have ramifications on the city. And if we can, that have like legal ramifications because of the state law. But the, the stuff you're talking about, if we can negotiate that while he's doing his planning with the county, perhaps we can reduce the financial impact to the city. Because that's two separate things. The financial impact and the regulatory impact are independent. Okay. The whole purpose of this, just to get back to the beginning of your presentation, is to try and capture methane or avoid methane being emitted into the atmosphere?
Avoid methane being generated in the landfills.
Okay, so the, the process that they're using at this vendor to stop that emission, is it, what is it that they're doing?
Currently, it's composting and it's spreading in open fields to, you know, break down.
Gotcha, okay.
They anticipate getting, when they can develop enough capital and get enough secured waste streams, they will build an anaerobic digester, which is in vessel. So they'll do it and capture it and capture that methane and co-gen it for generating electricity or whatever else they would do with that.
You actually had a presentation a couple of years ago by a company that was, I don't even know if they still exist, but the presentation was made to the council that there was consideration being given to building such a facility at Folsom Prison. And this council, for whatever reason, chose not to entertain the discussion.
Yeah.
Well, it was against my better judgment, because I think it would have been a perfect situation.
It may still be.
Is it encouraged or discouraged for households to create their own compost in their yards?
It's highly encouraged, yeah. Yeah, in fact, we have, I believe we have composting bins that we regularly give away or at a reduced rate. I don't want to speak out of turn, but we have them in our corp guard for people that request them.
If we were to invest in composting bins for everybody instead of green waste cans, could we avoid the transportation costs here?
I think as long as it doesn't show up in the waste stream, we would be fine.
So, and that's part of the reason that we need the additional analysts is to be able to identify what the waste stream is and.
Well, we have to develop the program. We have to track everything. We have to reach out to all the generators. And in this case, generators are all of our residents, as well as our businesses. Any business that generates more than two yards, I believe it is, of garbage will fall into this and they'll have to do organics recycling. There's already, I'll be back to you next council meeting to talk about AB eighteen-twenty-six, to talk about the business side of the organics and where we stand with that program. This actually encapsulates that program as we move forward. So AB twenty, eighteen-twenty-six will become part of SB thirteen-eighty-three. However, the enforcement action under it will not be put off until 2024. It will start immediately. So there's nuances of the laws that are going on in these programs to try to really capture the methane generation.
Gotcha. Okay, one last question, and then we'll take some public comment if there's any. The, if every city the size of Folsom is by mandate needing to have two or three people to manage a program like this, we obviously, as you've stated, will be in competition for people that have that skill set. But what is the pool of people that have that skill set, given that this program is nascent?
Well, that's.
I mean, what are they doing now?
That's, that's the interesting part, is it's not that anybody's going to come in with this skill set specifically. They will have the capabilities of generating this program and this, this rollout of this program. And they will have that background. You know, they will know about methane production. They're environmental specialists. They went to school and were either chemistry majors or biology or whatever their background was. But they have the knowledge and ability to, you know, adapt their education to institute this type of program.
Okay, so is that what we're looking for then? Is somebody with a technical college degree background?
Currently, we are. We really need somebody in-house immediately to, like I said, download the information from our in-house guru that knows, you know, not only how these programs work, but all the laws that go into what they're trying to achieve as far as the state or the waste stream and getting methane out of the landfills. That's, that's our number one priority right now. The second one is, as we move forward into this, how do we encapsulate AB eighteen-twenty-six into this law? That's a whole nother program that we're already short with staffing on, on the commercial side. How do we get that to roll into this law, starting in January of 2022? So then we'll need technicians, you know, we're going to need technicians to go out and educate the residents, educate the businesses to go look in garbage cans to see what they're throwing away. I mean, it's mandated. You know, the enforcement side of this, I didn't really touch on it a lot. In the, in the law, it says for every violation, it's a minimum of fifty dollars. If there's more than three in a year, it's three hundred dollars. So, I mean, they built it in, and we have no option other than, you know, not doing the enforcement. But then we're going to be in trouble for being out of compliance, so.
So the most positive way to look at this is that it's a jobs program. How about that? All right. Are there any questions or comments that anybody in the audience or online would like to make on this topic? Questions?
I have a comment on this. So the city of San Francisco, oh, sorry.
Anybody from the public? Okay, hearing none. Back to the council. Ask away.
Sorry, Mayor. So the city of San Francisco has been doing this for a long time. And when my mom comes to visit, she'll separate the compost from recycle and greens. And so, but she has told me if, if for an incident, it's sixty dollars. And somehow they know. So now I'm curious to know, do they have cameras on these garbage cans or how that, they know? I don't know.
Not gonna say.
They weigh it every week to make sure.
Was city passing to the resident that sixty dollars?
Sixty dollars, an incident, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of places worldwide that have very specific trash collection rules that are even more prescribed than this. So we're kind of catching up with Singapore and islands all across the world. Any other questions from the council? Okay, is there, do we need a motion to provide advice here?
I don't think we need a motion. We just need a nod of the heads that yes, proceed, as you've requested.
Go forth and send out job announcements.
Yeah, I feel like we don't have a lot of choice.
I think we'll need to come back with a formal action to actually include those positions in the existing budget. So we'll, we'll get that back in front of you shortly. As far as the rate increase, the rate study with your concurrence, we'll start that process immediately. Get that in front of the utility commission and get them up to speed on where we're moving with everything.
And kind of going back to Sarah's comment earlier, we, we did have a detailed discussion when we, when we were putting the budget together last year for any, for anybody that's watching this and, and understanding what Sarah's comment was. But we had a very, very long discussion about the fact that we couldn't wait on the rate increases because of what else was happening. And I know you made a very passionate plea that we needed to move forward with those rate increases sooner.
And for what it's worth, we actually started talking about this looming problem when I was still on the utility commission in 2017 or 18, so.
But we can also consider, though, in terms of the head count, I don't, we are not making any decisions here. I'm just making a comment, you know, environmental, you know, assistance, student assistance, you know. It's a head count, and again, we have to see our financials also. The one I saw, oops, is two head count you are proposing right now to this council. And any other alternates out there during this time for the next few years until we recover our financial situation is a suggestion I'm making through the student assistance. Student assistance is a wrong word. Maybe the assistants in that environment who can probably help us. Still, you can go ahead with a little limited number of resources. I'm just making a suggestion here, looking at where we are today. And finance director was giving the dollar amount numbers to everybody.
Okay, please proceed with your planning and rate study.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave. All right, next item.
Your next item is new business item eight. This is an affordable housing fund request and direction to staff. I will not read the title of both of these resolutions, but it is resolution number one zero five eight three and resolution number one zero five eight four. It's okay. It takes it a second.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski and council members. Stephanie Henry, Community Development Department. So this next item before you this evening pertains to the city's affordable housing funds and two specific requests for affordable housing loans from the city from two projects, affordable housing projects, the Sage at Folsom project and the Mangini Place project. So as you're aware, the city has had a strong commitment, especially in recent years, to help fund affordable housing projects. Within the last few years, we've actually provided a affordable housing grant to the Talavera Ridge apartment project. That was a seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar grant, and that was used to fund six extremely low-income units. In addition, we've also provided or approved three affordable housing loans totaling over fourteen million dollars for three affordable housing projects, which include the Bidwell Point project that has a hundred affordable units, the Parkway apartment project, which is currently under construction, and will provide seventy-one affordable units. And then we also have the Bidwell Place project, which either just received a building permit or is close to it. And they will be, that project will be providing additional seventy-four affordable housing units. It's important to note that one reason we have been able to provide this amount of funding in recent years was because the city was able to secure former redevelopment bonds in an amount of over nine million dollars from our former redevelopment agency. And that funding stream is, is no longer available with the dissolution of redevelopment funds. So as a result, going forward, the city's going to need to rely on our current housing funds. As of December thirty-first of 2020, we had over seven-point-four million dollars of unencumbered funds to be utilized for housing, affordable housing projects, as well as other housing services that we provide. This slide provides a table identifying our four primary funding streams. We have the Housing Trust Fund, which we consider as Fund Two-Two-One. This fund is made up of fees that we collect on commercial projects at building permit issuance. So this would be like new building construction for a commercial project. The next fund is the Housing Fund, Fund Two Thirty-Eight. This fund's primarily comprised of inclusionary in-lu fees. We received the inclusionary in-lu fee per building permit on single-family residential development of subdivisions. And then we also have the Oaks at Willows Springs Fund. That fund is the remaining balance of an inclusionary housing fee that was associated with the Oaks at Willows Springs subdivision. And lastly, you see, we have some bond funds remaining in our, in our housing funds. So as previously indicated, we have two projects that are requesting affordable housing loans from the city currently. We have the Sage at Folsom Senior Apartment Project. That's a hundred-unit senior project, which is requesting up to four-point-five-million-dollar affordable housing loan from the city. And then we also have the Mangini Place Apartment Project, which is a hundred-and-fifty-two-unit proposed project in the Folsom Plan area. And that request is for six-point-eight million dollars. So historically, the city has received our funding requests kind of sequentially. And in each of those cases, we've had more funding available than the actual request. But in this case, we actually have the two affordable housing loan requests. And collectively, those requests exceed our, our existing balance of over seven-point-four-three million. So basically, city staff is here asking the council to, you know, consider these two projects and the funding request and give, give staff direction. So in order to evaluate the two funding requests, the city secured the services of TDA Consulting, which is a national affordable housing consulting firm, to look at the project's pro formas and determine whether or not the requests were reasonable and kind of within side, inside like industry standards. So in reviewing both proposals, TDA found that they were, you know, in line. They were reasonable compared to other city-approved projects and that, you know, they didn't see, you know, any, any issues with, with what they were requesting in the amount. It's important to note that on December twenty-eighth of 2020, Congress passed the second COVID-nineteen stimulus relief package. And that included a permanent four-percent floor for low-income housing tax credits, which actually changes kind of the whole dynamic for affordable housing funding.
Can I ask a real brief question? Is it a floor where the rate will never go lower? Or is it a cap and the rate will never go higher?
Yeah, I will defer to the developers. That's why we hired TDA to help us work through those nuances. So anyhow, as a result of, of that development, St. Anton was actually able to reevaluate their project and kind of update their funding. And so they actually have ended up requesting a lower subsidy than they were initially requesting. So with, what that means is that currently, TDA will like reevaluate this project based on, on a new pro forma. So with regards to some of the key project details related to each of the projects, the Sage at Folsom project was actually approved by the Planning Commission in November of 2020. So just a few months back. It's on a four-point-two-acre site, and you can see the aerial of the site here on this slide. It's at the northeast corner of East Bidwell Street and Scholar Way. And is the building above the project site is actually the LDS Church. That actually was the LDS Church property. And USA purchased that portion of the site from, from LDS Church. It's a four-point-two-acre site. It will provide a hundred-and-ten multifamily, one-bedroom senior apartments. They will be affordable to low, very low and extremely low-income seniors. Just as a, as a note, the last time the city approved a loan for an affordable senior project was actually in 2007. And this project will add to the existing three-hundred-and-twenty-two affordable senior projects in the city. Something that's different with this funding request is that they actually are, there's actually two scenarios. There's one scenario, which is identified as Scenario A, is for a four-point-five-million-dollar loan, which includes federal home funds. The other scenario is a three-point-five-million-dollar loan that includes state tax credits. Under these. Under these proposals, it's important to note that they're not asking for both loans. It's an either or situation and I'll discuss that a little bit later. I provided this slide so that you can have an idea of the project elevations. This is what the site, the project's proposed to look like. And then you also have a site plan here showing how the project will be laid out on the site. Here's a slide that actually shows the comparison of the two different scenarios that I just mentioned. So under Scenario A, USA has applied to Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency to receive home funds in the amount of $800,000. And if they move forward with that proposal, they would be requesting a 4.5 million dollar loan from the city. And in order to approve this loan request, City Council is going to be asked to approve Resolution 10584, which pertains to this specific funding scenario. Under Scenario B, the request is for 3.5 million dollar loan from the city with a 1.8 million dollar equity of state tax credits. And under this scenario, that would be Resolution 10583 that council would be approving. So basically what we're asking is, I mean, from the city's standpoint, obviously, we would prefer Scenario B because that has a 3.5 million dollar request of the city, which is a million dollars less than this. But that being said, under the state tax credits, that is a more competitive type of funding. So what we're requesting is to provide direction to approve both of these resolutions, both types of funding, so that in the event that they are not able to secure the state tax credit funding, they can move forward with the home funds, which this is also being reviewed currently by SHRA and I believe goes to the board in February. With regards to the state tax credits, the reason we're bringing this to you now is their application is due February 4th.
So is there some reason why we can't just make the decision, you know, approve the 3.5 million tonight? And then if they don't get the state tax credit, then go to Plan B, which happens to be Scenario A and B oddly?
Right. I would let the developer give you a little bit more information on that. I'm sure we can do that. It's just I think they're trying to move quickly and we were trying to bring it together as one project, but we...
Carrie, is your question, can we act on both with preference for B? Or are you saying, what would, could we approve B tonight and A on a future date if necessary?
What I'm thinking is, what is the, I'm not sure if there's an inverse incentive to the developer for four and a half that's easier to get versus three and a half that's maybe harder.
Right.
I just don't want to create a disincentive to go for the larger dollar value.
Got it.
I think it's a great project, you know, I just, I want to see it built, so.
With regards to the Mangini Place project, this project has, the city has received an application for this project and we anticipate that it will go to the Planning Commission early spring for design review approval. This project's a 5.2 acre site. It's located on the corner of Savannah Parkway and Mangini Parkway in the Folsom Plan area. So this will be the first, this is the first proposed affordable project for the Folsom Plan area. The proposal is for 152 affordable one, two, and three-bedroom units. And these units will be affordable to low, very low and extremely low-income households. Another thing I'd like to point out is this is a pedestrian-focused project. They'll be close to a lot of trails and other amenities. And also, this little sliver right here is actually the site for the Mangini Elementary School. So individuals, they're trying to target kind of families in this location because it is close to the school and they will have other amenities onsite that are attractive to families like tot lots, et cetera.
Where's the closest commercial sites to that? Are they just up off the page? Yeah?
They're a little further up. You'd have to go up Savannah Parkway to Alder Creek and then there'd be the shops up there.
Okay.
So with this request, the loan request is for 6.86 million dollars. And then you saw this earlier on the Folsom Plan Area Quarterly Update, but here is the proposed site plan for the project and a rendering. This next slide gives you a comparison of the original request and now the updated proposed proposal. So the original request was what was actually reviewed by the consultant, which, you know, found this is reasonable. Now with the new tax credit update, this is the new request. So you see, originally, we had an 8.25 million dollar loan request and they've been able to reduce it to 6.86. And they've also added two additional units and also, based on their funding source, they've added some extremely low-income units. Provided this slide, just to give you kind of an idea of what the per-door cost has been in the past for projects. So you see, pretty much in the $50,000 range per unit. With the Sage at Folsom project, it's a senior project. These are all one-bedroom units. And depending on the funding stream, if we do Scenario A, it's 40,000 per unit or Scenario B, 31,000 per unit. And with the Mangini Place project, we have 45,733 per unit. So just kind of interesting that we have actually per-door cost that's lower than the previous projects that we've approved. And so, as previously indicated, the city, as of December 31st, had an unencumbered housing fund of just over 7.4 million dollars. However, as you saw during the Folsom Plan Area presentation, we have an abundance of single-family residential coming online. And over the past three months, we've had basically, what, 182 single-family building permits that were issued. On average, these building permits, with these building permits, we get a $6,000 inclusionary in lieu fee per building permit. So based on our estimate of 2021 of 50 single-family building permits per month, average of 6,000, we're estimating that our quarterly inclusionary housing fee collection will be 900,000 per quarter. And that's based on this, based on our request of 11.36 for the two funds, two affordable housing projects combined, we anticipate that we could fund both projects over the next 12 to 18 months if we keep pace with how we're going now. So with that, staff is recommending that we adopt both resolutions, Resolution number 10583 and Resolution 10584 to allow the USA project to have flexibility in their funding. And we also support a future housing loan for the Mangini Place Affordable Housing Project and request the City Council direct staff to bring this item back with a specific funding plan. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but the development team for both projects, they're here and I know that they might want to say a few words and they can answer some of the specifics.
Okay, well, let's, do we have any questions for the staff first and then we'll ask the applicants to come up and...
And Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, if I may just clarify, the structure for the two resolutions. Stephanie indicated it is preferred by city staff that the 3.5 million dollar loan be utilized because we want to leverage and tap into the tax credit as much as possible. It is required that the developer submit the application to obtain the tax credit. So the 4.5 million dollar loan under the second resolution does not even get used if the developer does qualify and is awarded the tax credit. So that would be notified in that event. Only in the event that developer applies, but is not able to obtain tax credit, would the resolution for 4.5 million dollar kick in.
Thank you. Rosario, anything?
I don't have questions right now.
Carrie?
No, I'm good.
Sarah?
Okay, YK, anything for staff?
Okay, great. If the applicants would like to come up and say a few words or share their plans with Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Steve Goll from USA Properties Fund. We're, we've been working on this project for a long time, really appreciate staff and the amount of time they've put into it and the creativity they've worked with us on to try to bring this proposal to you tonight. The original request that we were forging for this project was 4.5 million dollars. And what happened is that the governor came out last year, and we've been working on this for a while, and the government, governor came out last year and came up with a program, state tax credits that you could bring to a project that would allow us to, you know, kind of leverage down the money that we were requesting from the city, which is not only the city's preferred path, but is also our preferred path. The, and so that money went very quickly in 2020. It got reapproved for 2021 and it's expected to go very quickly again. And it's highly competitive in terms of what your ability to get those, get that funding. And so what we have done is come up with this bifurcated structure, whereas, hey, great, this money is there this year and if there's an opportunity for us to get it, let's move forward with it, with this project. But if it's not there, let's make sure that we have a project that can be financed, you know, in the, in the original way that we were looking at it and try to get it done that particular way. That's the, that's the genesis of the 3.5 versus the 4.5 million dollars. So the bottom line is that the state tax credit is very competitive and, you know, we're hopeful that we are successful in getting that in our current application, but happy that we've got, if you so deem it to approve, that we've got a backup structure that will work and allow the project to get built. We're on target...
Are you guys otherwise ready to, you're ready to rock and roll?
Yeah, we are on target to shooting for starting the project sometime like in September, I think, September, early October is what it is.
Okay, so that's the reason for the urgency and wanting us to approve both funding options at the same time?
Correct, that's correct. And if I may, go back to the previous presentation about organic waste and food insecurity and whatnot. One of the things that we are very sensitive in on our senior communities is food insecurity as that's become a growing issue. And we have started to build pantries in our clubhouses where we can accept donations, you know, the recycling that he was talking about. And this is something that we have seen a lot grow in popularity in our projects and that we're working with groups and with stores and whatnot to help us provide that kind of a scenario. So that's something that we're instituting in to try to alleviate food insecurity that may happen on the heart, on the part of our low-income tenants, senior tenants in this community.
Yeah, but do you have a community composting bin planned?
Yeah, we'll give them a bucket. And your daughter can come over and show them how to use it.
It seems wise to be going down parallel paths on the funding so that you can get the project underway most expeditiously. Any questions from the council?
Stephanie, could you bring back up the picture that shows kind of the layout, I guess, so you can see Scholar Way and Cabot? Let me just start by saying that I'm, you know, very supportive of the concept of senior affordable housing. And I think the general location is good for senior housing because you've got medical office buildings across the street and, you know, grocery stores close by and all that sort of stuff. But I, could you just walk us through how folks are going to access this? They're going to come in off of Scholar Way or they're going to come in off of Cabot, I guess? Okay. And they're going to come down that long driveway next to the...
Correct.
Parking lot for the church? Okay.
As you go back, we also have, are working with Elliott Homes to try to create a pedestrian connection down there in the bottom right-hand corner to the shopping center so people, so they can get in there. We're very excited about that proximity to the shopping center and the added amenity that provides to our businesses.
Nice, okay. So I have kind of another comment slash question. I realize that design review happens at the Planning Commission level, but I'm going to make this, this comment. Obviously, this is a more contemporary-style building and I'm not opposed to contemporary. But I wonder if any consideration was given with respect to the design and having it relate to the existing church building? Because, I mean, it basically, from the public's point of view, is going to look like one property, especially because of the way you drive down the church thing. And it just doesn't seem like they relate at all. And so I'm just wondering about, you know, on this one, I know, I was looking at the Planning Commission packet and it says something about stone veneer and then you've got, you know, brick veneer on the, on the church. I mean, is there some way to make them relate at all? It just seems to me like they should.
Well, this is something that we actually spent a lot of time, both internal to our group as well as with city staff before it went to the Planning Commission. And I think we kind of landed on something that, that we've, that we all collectively felt good about, us internally at USA as well as city staff. And, you know, but if you would be so inclined to ask us to go back and sit down with staff and take a look at what that might look like, we'd be happy to do that.
Is there, the, the, excuse me, north-south line that runs side to side on this image, where the smaller planting is, there's an elevation change there between the parking lots of 15 or 20 feet probably almost?
I think it's a little bit less down there, but you can see the switchbacks for the ADA ramping down there.
So Sarah, there's some, there's some like physical definition between the church property sitting up higher and this project sitting down lower more at the Bidwell elevation, if that helps at all.
Okay.
So there is some distinction.
There will be, there will be vertical separation between the two projects.
And then is there an entrance only onto Scholar over there on the left?
Yes, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
I think, you know, it's one of these things where you're so close to Bidwell and the traffic lights, you know, it wasn't really something to...
Is there an emergency exit onto Scholar?
Well, that entrance only, I'm sure could work that way.
Yeah, I think that's the intention.
Fire apparatus, yeah.
No, I'm talking about from Scholar.
Yeah, I think that's the intention is that, you know, people would go out, you know, if it's in an emergency situation there.
So there'll be an EVA at Scholar?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, okay. Other questions? YK, anything?
Just want to make a big thank you for, you know, coming to our town and picking up this project. This town definitely needs a lot of affordable housing and the place you pick is the best.
Thank you.
Walking distance to the food and walking distance to the, Sarah was mentioning the Walgreens. Thank you.
Thank you.
It really is a good spot for this.
They already have other projects in Folsom, YK. They've been, they've been a great partner to the city of Folsom for a long time.
Yeah, we built our first senior community 15 years ago on Creekside Drive across from the hospital, Vintage World, the senior apartments.
And there's what, a three or four-year waiting list to get in there now, I think?
Yeah, that's part of why we're here.
Yeah, I saw the staff report. I mean, they felt you as one of us.
Thank you.
Excellent. Ladies, any other questions?
I don't have any questions. Just there, it's a nice-looking building, very, also very supportive of senior affordable housing, so good project.
Thank you.
Seems like you got... Seems like you guys are heading down the right track. Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to comment or provide some critique? Questions?
I was just going to change the slide for you.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Arti Zahadani. I'm with St. Anton Communities. We're the latter recommendation in the staff report and very pleased to be here. We've been a, a great partner of the city for a number of years now. We have the Granite City Project that has hundreds of people on the waiting list on 1150 Sibley. We just finished our Bidwell Point project, 140 units that leased up faster than any project in our 30-year history, 10,000-unit portfolio. It leased up before we were even able to open any of the units. And first and foremost, thanks to all your staff for giving us temporary occupancy. I know that's a, a challenge, but the poorest of the families were able to move in as quickly as possible, and it took a lot of movement from the city and from your city manager on down, and that really set a precedent for us. I'm honored to tell you we're going to start construction next week on another affordable housing project behind the Bank of America. We're going to keep the Bank of America in place and have 75 units behind it as well. That'll be a, another kind of workforce housing project, as we call them, ones and twos, similar to their single-bedroom project. They're not meant really for families. But in the years that I've been doing this work, every single time I've been before you, whether it was the late Ernie Sheldon or others and other elected officials, they've said, "Go to the plan area, go to the plan area. We want a diversity of housing. We don't just want housing in this existing city." So we've spent months and months, and I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Westland Partners, Bill Bunce, Rob Aragon, Rick Jordan, they really have been great partners. They own and manage the South of 50 area, they selected us, they've worked with us, and I think the solution your staff is presenting this evening is a very workable one. We're comfortable with the timeline. Our objective is to start construction on that project this year. And based on how quickly your staff has been approving and working on affordable housing projects, I think we can do it. There's a recommendation that your, your affordable housing manager made in the, in the staff report that she didn't mention, but I think is very important, and I'd really like to, got to pound on it this evening, is that she's requesting that we have the ability to work with other developers in the plan area who have affordable housing obligations where their fees will be due later in the timeline, but see if we can cut some sort of private arrangement where those funds would come to us earlier so we can get these units built now or soon. And we've done that in the past in our Grand City Project. So I'd, I'd really appreciate if, if your willingness this evening is to proceed with the proposal that staff's presenting, please reiterate that you're comfortable with that approach as well. Just one last point, I think Folsom's kind of been below the radar in their affordable housing production, but if you look at the, when it comes to getting recognition in the community, but if you look at the sheer number of units that are available now, I think you're a leader in the region, possibly in the state. It's been very creative, fast, responsive staff, and if you continue to do that, I'm, I'm certain that we'll be the first project in the Folsom Plan Area. Hopefully, there'll be more, but we really want to get going, and we really appreciate your consideration this evening.
That's fantastic. Is there, is there a possibility to add a fourth floor to any of this?
Yeah, and you know, that's, that's a great question, and you always, Mayor, ask these, these kind of detailed questions that have a financial link to them, and I really appreciate that because if anybody's watching, they'll appreciate the academic side of this business.
That needs an architect.
Right. So, so number one-
I'd be open to a density bonus.
No, right, right. I'll give you a, a one-minute response. It's not a quick-up response. So one is kind of the scope and vision for the project, and two is the financial feasibility. So the scope and vision for this project is to create a family community. We're across the street from a, from a school, and that's why we have three bedrooms, two bedrooms, and one bedrooms. I have found, and I think a lot of affordable housing developers will agree, that we need to have about a 1.5 space-per-unit parking standard. That's why we don't have problems with our parking at any of our projects in the city. You won't have one complaint. If we do go to a fourth story, we'd have more tenants, more residents, and we'd lose our parking ratio, and there could potentially be a problem in the future. We really use this site to have a pool, a gym, a, a learning center, and we spread it out so there'd be good, just a, a good traffic flow. If you go to a fourth story, which we've done in, you know, a couple thousand units, it adds about another $50 per foot in cost. So just, you know, I think one of the worst things about this COVID crisis has been, it, for our business, has been rates of financing have dropped, tax credit floor, great question, it is the floor, it'll be 4% flat, has been set, and that's why we've lowered our fee. But it's also increased construction costs. There is so much construction occurring. Just to give you a sense, our three-story product that we built on Bidwell, it's fully leased now, was X amount, was about $170 a foot, and this one will be about $40 to $50 more per foot. That's how much construction costs have gone up in two years. So to add that fourth floor would be another probably $2 million in subsidy need, maybe another year of delay. That's why we request that we stay with three stories, and that's at 30.2 DU per acre, which is the goal for regional housing needs as well.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Hey, Arti, you must have a little rhyme or something. How do we remember which one's Bidwell Point, which one's Bidwell Place?
Yeah, you know, when, when you were mayor, Vice Mayor-
Bidwell Place is bigger.
Right, it's bigger. But you had a great idea where we would have the, the connectivity between our project, Bidwell Place, and Bidwell Point, then cut through Coles. And we've been working with your staff on that. I think ultimately, they'll both become Bidwell Point, but when you go through the state for your applications, you just have to name them differently. That area of Bidwell, and you've been leading it, I think is really ripe for rejuvenation. There's a lot of interest in that area. Coles at some point will redevelop. We're planning to put a trail in there and reconnect, and would love to do a master plan back there at some point, but I think that's going to be a focus of that area.
Magnificent. All right. Any other questions? All right, any other comments from the public?
I just want to thank him. Thank you so much, sir. I think I'm going to probably learn a little bit more about it. I'm only month two in the seat, so, but I'll learn more about you. Thank you so much for doing this.
All right.
My only question to staff at this point is, we've got two alternate resolutions for the USA project and nothing in here to specifically address the, the St. Anton project.
Councilmember Howell, we are, we're asking you to just give us direction to come back to you with a funding plan because essentially, we don't have enough money in the bucket to fund both of them. If we did, we'd be recommending that to you tonight. So we're recommending that we move forward with the USA property funding tonight because they're further along, as you say, ready to go. And St. Anton's has a little more time, and we're looking for some creative solutions. So the goal would be to come back to you within, hopefully, two, three months with a funding plan for St. Anton's.
Okay, great.
All right, I'll entertain a motion if there's one.
I'll move resolutions 1083, excuse me, 10583 and 10584.
I'll second.
Can we take action together?
Please, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Chalum Chirla?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes.
And I look forward to seeing the funding plan for St. Anton.
And USA helps St. Anton out by getting the, the bigger tax credit so they can get their project a quarter earlier.
Good luck on that.
Okay, please call the next item.
Okay, your next item this evening is the appointment of city council representatives to regional commissions. And we have pressed Stephanie into service, she's helping with the projection of the table of appointments. This is something that the council takes a look at periodically when we have new council members, and this just distributes the council's representation on these regional commissions and committees and boards throughout the region. It's important that Folsom continue to participate so we ensure that our interests are represented throughout the region. And I believe the mayor has been working with the council members to determine areas of particular interest. And so these are the spread of assignments that we believe works for everybody, and we would ask for your consideration and approval.
Pam, if you can make that just a little bit bigger.
Okay, then we'll scroll up.
Yeah.
And we'll scroll down.
Thank you.
So we have, I have individually spoken with the other council members about the assignments that are listed here, but happy to revisit anything that may need to be revisited. And just as a note for anybody who's watching, most of these assignments are ones that are not absolutely prescribed, that they can't change. And as people's interests change or their, you know, capabilities grow, we'll definitely be revisiting this, these assignments as time goes by. If there's no comment, we'll entertain a, a motion to accept.
I'll, I'll move to accept it.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Chalum Chirla?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes.
Thank you, Pam.
Okay, and the final item.
All right, your final item this evening is item number 10. This is the mayor's appointment and confirmation by the city council of planning commissioners to serve on the Historic District Commission. Just briefly, as your council will remember, when you considered the appointments in early January, at that time, the council decided to have the planning commission make their recommendations of their representatives to the Historic District Commission. Those are before you tonight, and so we would ask that you confirm and approve the appointment of Kevin Dool and Daniel West to serve as the planning commission representatives to the Historic District Commission.
Any comments or questions? Public comment?
I'm just happy that we don't have any public comment on this.
I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
So I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Chalum Chirla?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, yikes. Is everyone hearing that echo?
Yeah, it's fun, though, go ahead.
Try to talk fast.
It sounds like you're talking from another planet.
Yeah, this is odd. I'm going to go up there.
Please join the Folsom Chamber of Commerce and Mayor Mike Kozlowski for the An All Virtual Annual State of the City event this Thursday, January 28th, beginning at 11:15 a.m. The mayor will also moderate a discussion of healthcare experts, including Stem Express CEO Kate Dyer and Michael Corpiel, who is president and CEO of Mercy Folsom Hospital and also Mercy San Juan Hospital. And you can get your tickets on the chamber's website, which is folsomchamber.com. Last week, the city of Folsom dedicated Folsom's Historic District outdoor amphitheater as the Zittle Family Amphitheater. The family name is recognizable in part because of Zittle Farms, a farm and pumpkin patch that has been a Folsom family favorite since 1976. Roger Zittle, you may know, was the first manager of the Folsom Chamber of Commerce and promoted businesses in the city for over 30 years. He was also a founding member of the Folsom Athletic Association and helped establish the city's Parks and Rec Department. Roger's wife, Gail, served as a planning commissioner for seven years and also assisted with the development of the city's first general plan. The application window for local nonprofit groups to sell state-approved fireworks in the city runs from 8 a.m. February 1st through noon on March 19th. Folsom clubs, such as youth sports groups, school booster clubs, and other civic organizations are eligible to sell safe and sane fireworks to the public during the Fourth of July holiday season. The city of Folsom is updating the housing element of the general plan to ensure the city is meeting the housing needs of all the members of the community. You heard a lot about that tonight. The plan is designed to provide the city with a coordinated and comprehensive strategy for promoting the production of safe, decent, and affordable housing. The city invites community members to review the draft housing element and provide comments by February 9th, when the city council will have a public hearing on this issue. You can visit folsomhousingelement.com to learn more. And finally, our hearts are very heavy as we continue to grieve as a community for the line-of-duty death of Sacramento County Sheriff's Deputy Adam Gibson. Our thoughts and prayers are with his loved ones and colleagues. He will be laid to rest on Wednesday, February 3rd, so our hearts are with him and his family. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, council comments? Sarah, anything?
Just a couple things. YK and I toured two homeless shelters in Sacramento last week with Steve Waters, who is a Folsom resident and runs the First Step Communities Program. The first was literally 24 tough sheds that had been placed on a vacant lot next to a church. That caters to 18- to 24-year-olds, mostly former foster youth, who would be homeless if not for this facility. And then also, a low-barrier adult shelter that could accommodate, I think, 80 individuals, men and women. Rosario, this will be of particular interest to you as you're going to sit on that Sacramento County Homeless Council. I, I thought Steve had a pretty good suggestion. He said what the county really needs is a shelter specifically dedicated to those with severe mental health issues. You know, things where they could be not as, you know, not as many people to a room, the lighting could be adjusted, things that probably would make those folks more comfortable, and so I thought that was a good idea. As far as a couple of the boards that I sit on, Association of California Cities Allied with Public Safety, I am now the president of that association. We're focusing on recruiting new members this year. That's basically cities that have prisons. And then also, I'm kind of taking over the prison world, I guess. I'm also now the chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee for Folsom State Prison and California State Prison Sacramento, so that's it.
Awesome.
Awesome.
YK?
I want to extend what Sarah said. It is very, you know, impressive to see all the youth, you know, in that little sheds. Yeah, hopefully, maybe, you know, Rosario is going to take a peek into it, and even the adult shelter was also great. And also, I interestingly went into the League of California Cities, and on the same topic, the homelessness, they were talking about around the, in a state, what's going on and how to do it. And, you know, a few things caught my attention, which probably, I think I mentioned briefly to you, I'm going to continue, manager. They have some federal grants, you know, giving away almost like $2.6 billion, and we can, as a cities, directly apply for those grants. And the window is very short, and some of the programs we have seen the other day is going to be perfectly fit for those. So I'll pass that message to our city manager and see anything we can get, a small chunk from those newly released federal grants. So otherwise, you know, I'm learning, and I'm learning, and thank you for my colleagues. I just want to, you know, this is my third meeting, and city manager, you have been, you know, so kind and prepping me. I just want to make that, you know, on the record. Thanks to all my colleagues and the staff for mentoring me in this seat.
Excellent, very good. Rosario?
I have a couple of comments. So I did a ride-along with Folsom PD last Thursday for about five hours, and I was interested in getting an insight into what the homeless issue looked like in Folsom. And I went with Sergeant Aaron Zelaya and Officer John Stegner, and what I saw was, was very indicative that we have a problem with some abandoned homeless camps that I think we could do something about. And I've given some of my recommendations to Elaine, our city manager. So I think there is something that we can do there for the city. And Sarah, I wholly, wholeheartedly agree that severe mental health is one of the issues that I think is a top priority to get some form of resolution on for the entire county of Sacramento. Just really quick, talking about that, I did speak to a few of our unhoused residents here in Folsom when I visited these camps, and I had asked, would you welcome some help in getting some cleanup here in, in, in your camps? And so they welcomed it, they, so I think it's something that we can do to clean up the garbage, the, just so many things that are in these camps, and that is just a health risk. The ice skating rink in the historic area is open until Valentine's Day, so anybody who is looking to get engaged, and you wanted to do it on an ice skating rink, here's your opportunity. Mayor Kozlowski, I'm looking forward to hearing this virtual State of the City this coming Thursday. I also watched the Parks and Recs Commission last week, and Lorene Pajoni gives an incredibly great introduction and overview of what Parks and Recs is about. So if you want to know a little more about that, that meeting, that, actually, presentation is great to watch. For anyone who missed out on the hand sanitizers for the businesses or the residents, we still have some, so feel free to contact us, and we'll make arrangements for pickup. What else here? So in the last couple of weeks, I've had, I've been to a couple of locations that are city-owned buildings that are vacant, and I think when we look at economic recovery, this may be a good idea to get a list of all those buildings and which ones are vacant and what we can do to get those, to get those rented out so that we can generate some revenue[1769.54] so that we can generate some revenue for the city. And then lastly, just congratulations to Spencer Hodgson for passing the bar exam. That's it.
Excellent. Carrie?
Update on, from the RT board, who met last night. They were given an award by Caltrans for transportation, basically excellence in transportation. The Southeast Connector JPA meeting is Friday morning, virtually. Nothing else is really, nothing exciting at Regional SAN. Well, it's, you know, not that sewage isn't totally exciting all the time, but I don't know if there's anything newsworthy to pass along. And I'll go along with Ms. Farrar's comments earlier tonight. Some of those sightings that, that she reported were, two of them were actually leaving council meetings.
Oh, gosh.
And I've been talking about this for the last twenty years, that, you know, there's way too many people running lights. And anybody that jumps on a light is really taking their life in their hands. So I'd be happy to see Folsom PD writing a whole bunch more tickets and maybe some of these people will learn their lesson. I don't know if it's, it does seem to have gotten worse in the last year. So I don't know if people, you know, think that the pandemic has, you know, made everyone else stay home and that they have free, free run of the road and the, the lights and the stop signs and, and speeding. But it's, it's gotten significantly worse in the last year. And more people are going to get hurt. And I agree completely with Janine about the people that are out walking at night. I keep seeing people that are wearing all dark clothes.
Yeah.
Which is really, really frightening. So
Yeah, absolutely.
And be careful tonight because it sounds like the weather's going to be really bad.
Yeah, yeah, we're in for some bad weather for a couple days. Thank you very much. I just have one quick thing. The SECOG reconvened for its first meeting of 2021 last week. And largely, we spent the entire time congratulating people that were leaving the board and welcoming people that were joining the board. It's a very large board, so we spent a couple hours doing that. But sandwiched in between there was a presentation from the lobbyists that works with SECOG in all of our communities. And they have a pretty robust plan, working with all of us, to work on our legislative representatives at State Capitol, trying to get some funding for the Green Means Go program, which we actually talked about last year. We were unsuccessful then, but we are feeling that there's a better possibility now, partially because of the, the, you know, surplus that the governor has discovered in the budget and some of the other funding programs that he's funded as a result. And this, kind of like our discussion earlier of the solid waste diversion program, the region was given a unfunded mandate to meet air quality standards that are higher than all other parts of California. And we said, great, we will accept those, but we need some funding to be able to implement them. And we're working on that now. So that's what's going on at SECOG. I did not appreciate fully how complicated and difficult it is to prepare a pithy eighteen minutes of talking for a speech. But I know now, and congra, thank you, Sarah, for having done it last year. It's hard, it's hard work and Carrie for doing it in the past. And good luck to you guys when you get a chance to do that. All right, with that, I will adjourn the meeting. It is nine oh six.